Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Janelle Irwin, Associate Editor and Tampa Bay Politics Reporter for Florida Politics. Welcome to the Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce District 7 Candidate Forum. I want to point out that the Tampa Bay Chamber focuses on policy and not politics. But while they do not endorse candidates, they are interested in highlighting members of the, highlighting candidates to the members of the business community on issues that are important to them. Without any further ado, I'm going to get right into today's questions. These were submitted by Chamber members. I have added a few of my own in the, in the event that we have extra time to get to them. So we'll do the Chamber questions first, and then if we still have time, we'll get to some additional questions as well. Jumping right into it, let's just go quickly through each candidate and give us a little bit of an introduction about yourself and your platform. Let's, let's start with Mr. Peterman.
I want to thank you for, and appreciate you for inviting me and all the other candidates to this forum. I am Frank Peterman and running for the County Commission District 7. Served in office several years, City of St. Pete, City Council, State House, State Legislature, and also served as Secretary for Department of Juvenile Justice. I was in working community for many, many years, even before I got into politics and got into government. I've enjoyed that. Also serves pastor of church 18 years, Rocker Jesus Missionary Baptist Church. Enjoy service, enjoy connecting with people. Done it for many, many years, and I just look forward to hopefully going forward in this race. Also commend my other colleagues. They actually have done great work in this community also. I just feel like I have a chance to possibly have this seat going forward. And I look forward to this wonderful time of sharing. And so that does it for me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Peterman. Let's go now to Maria Scruggs. Maria, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Thank you Tampa Bay Chamber for the invitation and opportunity to introduce your members, Maria L. Scruggs. I have the unique pleasure of being a 40-plus-year public administrator and bureaucrat, where I've had extensive background in law enforcement, community corrections, which is where I now serve in Orange County, community and neighborhood development, healthcare, and some extent of involvement in nonprofits. My can, I'm a long-term resident of St. Petersburg, Florida, where I have, I'm known as a mama, a nana, and auntie to many, many, many stakeholders in this community. My campaign is very simple. It's about the people. And one of the things that sets me apart from my distinguished colleagues is that not only am I a stakeholder in that I'm a taxpayer, but I've actually been in the public sector for over 40 years at different levels of management. And once you begin to establish policy and focus on a platform that is about the people, it's imperative to understand the day-to-day operations of public sector organizations. My platform is very simple, that when we look at affordable housing, we have over 32% of our residents that are paying renting and choose to rent. That our expansion on affordable housing has to reach beyond ownership. We have to focus on the fact that if we're going to move businesses or relocate businesses to Pinellas County, we have to have quality schools. And that when we are looking at how we respond to COVID-19, we need a county commissioner who understands the complexity of having to make systematic changes in the upcoming years to follow. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's move next to Renee Flowers, incumbent, Pinellas County School Board Member.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much to the Tampa Bay Chamber for having me. I am running for the Pinellas County Commission seat. Some may know, who will watch this in a recording, that I've had the pleasure of serving constituents on the St. Petersburg City Council since 2012 on the Pinellas County School Board, and certainly as the President of Florida League of Cities, managing 411 municipalities throughout the state of Florida. I'm running because I grew up in affordable housing in Jordan Park, so I understand what it's like to live in a place and have aspirations for homeownership. That's why I'm working very closely with a group that is building 246 affordable workforce units. Those units will be housed for our police officers, our firefighters, and some of our teachers when you're looking at 80 to 120% AMI. I'm focused on working with our community redevelopment agencies and small businesses, both minority-owned and women-owned businesses. They've been hit extremely hard as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and it is imperative that we provide the supports that those businesses will need so that after the pandemic is over, that they are still operational and they continue to be the bright light for so many residents in our community that find it difficult for employment elsewhere. I've had the pleasure of serving as a school board member, an 86% graduation rate, which has exceeded the state's graduation rate. As a matter of fact, yesterday and today, there are a number of graduates working across, walking across the baseball field in a simulant of a graduation to give them somewhat of a memory of the things they've been able to accomplish. I look forward to answering the questions that have been put forth by Chamber members. And I thank you so very much again, Janelle, for moderating and for having us here today.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, Representative Wenge Newton.
Well, and thank the Tampa Bay Chamber. I, just like, just yesterday, we had the legislative session over in Tampa about your priorities. I look forward to hearing questions about your priorities and what's important to the Chamber. Wenge Newton, born and raised in Midtown, South St. Pete, most of the area, all of Pinellas County. It was that way in 1963 when I was born. It was that way in 1985 when my mom died with a massive heart attack there, raising eight kids on government subsidies from which I hail. State Representative, 12 consecutive years, consecutive years of governance, as one after the next. St. Petersburg City Council from 2008 to 2016, Florida House of Representatives from 2016 to current. I'm endorsed by the St. Petersburg Development Association, the St. Petersburg Association of Firefighters, the Pinellas Realtors Organization, 32 members of the Florida Legislature, Councilwoman St. Petersburg Brandy Gaver, Council Chairman St. Petersburg Ed Montanaro, and Council Member St. Petersburg Robert Blackman. At times like this, you need someone in place with current proving track record. So you know, let's, let's take our relationship, Tampa Bay Chamber, let's take our relationship, the 315 court spree. I need you, can't win without you. I ask for your support for my campaign for Pinellas County Commission District 7. We have a lot of things that we need to be able to fix in Midtown, South St. Pete, and Pinellas County. I look forward to bringing my relationship, the bridges that I built, and the connections that I have from Tallahassee in DC, from the council, all the way back to County Commission, and being able to represent the people in Pinellas County and of District 7. So thank you for your hosting us this morning. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you so much, Representative Newton. Our first question is about jobs, appropriate for a Chamber event. How can county government use its authority and its resources to direct job growth, particularly at a time when the economy will be recovering from the COVID-19 crash? Let's start this one off with you, Mrs. Scruggs.
Thank you, Janelle. Well, the first thing that the county can do as it relates to supporting job growth, given that I think at this current time, there are only 26 jobs open for vacancies in county government, is focus not only on what jobs can be made internally by eliminating as many contracted opportunities as we possibly could in government. That would increase specific job opportunities within government. The other strategy that I think is very, very apropos at a time like this is going to have to be a community, a coordination of major stakeholders with the business community. Nobody can predict at this point what the fallout is going to be in job loss. There are different numbers thrown out, but what we can definitely say is that the residents in District 7 are going to be more adversely impacted. And that when we talk about strategic partnerships, it's going to be imperative that the Pinellas County Government, in conjunction with our major employers, target those areas that are going to be the most impacted as a result of COVID-19. And I think we have substantive data to show that there have been specific industries, particularly the hospitality industry, the, that have were lost, that have lost many, many jobs. And then how do we then recreate an opportunity for those people to either get retrained or that we are creating opportunities within the public sector that have been occupied by contracted services?
All right, let's go next to Renee Flowers.
Oh, thank you. I was just talking about this very tough topic with ClearPak right before I came on to this one. But I think Pinellas County Schools is taking a very strong position in providing some of the dollars for retraining individuals for employment opportunities as we move through the pandemic epidemic. We've seen many small businesses convert their brewery factories into factories that produce hand sanitizer. We've seen a number of small business entrepreneurs who are selling jewelry or retail clothing change the way that they're doing their marketing strategies and going more to online and having packaging services so that they're able to maintain their businesses through this pandemic. The County Commission set aside $35 million from the CARES Act funding to support their Small Business Development Center. On yesterday's meeting, Mike Maidele reported that 2,777 applications have already been provided for, providing for that financial remuneration to help businesses either to retool the way that they operate, or to maintain the staff that they have, or to expand growth. And just today, this morning, on the news, there are two businesses that are in fact expanding their growth because they find their, they found their niche through this pandemic. It also will require that we look at some of the things that we're providing for our seniors as they're graduating from high school. Cybersecurity is a huge area where there are employment opportunities. Government contract services, partnering with McDill Air Force Base for those individuals who reside in the community but can provide those services, linking them with armed forces. So it's just the way that we retool, and we've done this before, when Raytheon had to retool itself or leave our community. We saw Pinellas County Government through Career Source provide the dollars to help retrain those staff members so that they can maintain their employment and expand their, their reach for services. And so it's going to be that creative way of thinking because small businesses are still the heart and crux of many communities. And we want to make sure that those people who may not be able to be employed in some larger corporation functions certainly can be employed by our small minority and women-owned businesses within the heart of our own community.
Thank you very much. Representative Newton.
Thank you, thank you. And I, I look forward to continuing the relationship I have with the Governor's Office. As you know, we have $80 million in the Job Growth Fund. The Job Growth Fund provides job training and jobs at the end of it. It partners with colleges like St. Pete College, and like we do with Lockheed Martin on the F-15 fighter jet. That creates jobs and at the end of it, training for individuals to earn living wage jobs. We can also look at doing some right infrastructure projects. With, if and when the HEROES bill go through, it's going to be $340 billion of additional revenue for local governments to plug up budget shortfall holes. That money left over can be used for infrastructure projects, and we can start building on some infrastructure that we need, thus creating living wage jobs rather than sending money back to DC. Also, we can do, there's federal money for contact tracing. As we talk about COVID, we can train people to do contract tracing when all these people get exposed and reexposing people. Those are good-paying jobs. We have federal funds to pay for that. And public-private partnerships, and last but not least, apprenticeship programs. We'll be training individuals up in industries. We've got a lot of people that's been doing, they're reaching 30 and 40 years, 25 to 30 years in employment, and we have a lot of interviews in the drop programs. We got to look the backfield and with qualified, trained people, apprenticeships. So that's just some of the things that I'll be looking at and being able to bring to the table as your next Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Mr. Peterman.
Yeah, I think a lot of how this should have, has been said, really good responses. I think the only thing I would add is that I think there ought to be a kind of matching of small businesses and larger businesses, that there'd be a mentor relationship between big business and small business, that they would, big business will help undergird small businesses in mentoring them, and also giving them maybe financial support, training, a management, a management piece, as well as modernizing maybe some of the computer systems that they have. I just think there is a wonderful opportunity to do that, maybe even act as a guarantor on some of the resources they'd like to get from financial institutions, banks, and other places. So I think I'd like to see a focus with both the larger corporate structure and small businesses coming together more in this day and time. And I think there's, there are ways to do that. And I think by doing it, we can create more jobs, as well as trying to lure a, you know, major manufacturing. I think we ought to get back to that, maybe to the area. And I think the combination of partnership between government, small business, and the larger corporate structure, we can bring jobs to, to this community.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to our next question. This one involves home rule, which is obviously something that's very important as a county commissioner. Local governments across the state have been critical of the legislature in recent years, suggesting there is a Tallahassee knows best mentality that is threatening home rule. Do you agree that that is the case? If yes, how would you, as a county commissioner, work to establish a productive relationship with our legislative delegation? If no, then how do you explain some of the legislation filed in recent years that handicaps local governments? Let's start with, who did I start with last time? Let's start with you, Ms. Flowers.
Thank you. Yes, we've always not supported the legislature's invasion when it comes to decision-making, whether it be for land use opportunities, whether it's related to how we allow permitting for construction projects. I've always supported home rule as President of the Florida League of Cities. Of course, that was one of our main functions, to really say, let the cities who work very independently and who work very closely with those people in their communities, allow them to make the decisions that are best for their communities because we are all different. How will we work, or how would I work to foster that? I have relationships with the legislature, both current and former legislators, and we will continue to advocate for that. We're not supposed to always agree with one another. That is never the premise of being a leader or an elected official. But what is the premise is that you are able to have a communication with someone and show them or explain to them why this particular rulemaking would not be beneficial for the community. I've partnered with the chambers on both sides of the bay. I've partnered with nonprofit entities, and also as a member of my sorority, chairing the Connection Committee, being in Tallahassee before the legislative session and during the legislative session, working with the Florida School Board Association and the National School Board Association to really emphasize how important it is to allow decision-making capabilities to happen on a local level. And I will say land use again, because that seems to be one of the more pervasive issues that we're talking about right now. We all want to address climate change. We want to make sure that tourism remains a function where we can express and expand our financial revenue from that source. But if we're not looking at how we build smart and efficient, we're going to find the state of Florida in some trouble and underwater. And so how is it that we can stress to the legislature that home rule is important when it comes to land use development, permitting, and processing services in the different locales, those that are closer to the bay, closer to the water, versus those that are inland? The same with public school settings. We have to be very careful about where we construct new facilities based on land use. So that's just one example of how home rule is so important when it comes to decision-making capabilities. And I have been successful in beating back some of those things that would have affected our county, but did not because of the relationship building with our legislature.
Thank you so much, Representative Newton.
But to your question, you have to know which is set up before you can operate within it. First and foremost, the state created the counties, or the federal government creates the states, states create the counties. Counties a lot over the 24 municipalities that will be servicing over. Servicing on the city council, it was often times that we had to have things we need to go to Tallahassee and lobby for. I lobbied three consecutive years on council when I went up for, with the, for juvenile justice with the Dream Defenders and the, and to get the legislation put into place. Also, everything we do in the legislature preempts, everything. Need to know that when you're dealing with the legislature. Also, I'm endorsed by 32 members of the current Florida Legislature. We just got through passing a $93 billion budget. And for the first time in history, or in over a decade, we were successful in presenting sweeping of Sodowsky Trust Fund, thus creating $370 million for affordable housing. I have those current relationships. As a member of the Florida House for Life, as your next Commissioner, I get to walk onto the floor and lobby my current colleagues, the one we just passed the budget with and left there in March, not ancient history, current. And I'll be able to go and make sure that we have things in place to kind of prevent that preemption. But back to your original question about preemption, everything we do preempts. So what you have to do locally at home is make sure it never gets to Tallahassee. We know about zoning. We know about the things that we need in this county. We have to put those policies and ordinances in place now because they got this thing that protects you against preemption. It's called grandfathering. So as we have 67 counties, four and 12 cities, 21 million people, we have got to get busy and be more proactive in putting things in place. I'll give you a prime example, the straw ordinance. The straw ordinance came to Tallahassee, you know, asking us to not preempt the cities on behavior, to put a straw order in a place that was detrimental, it was dire, it was going to kill all the turtles, na, 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 na. Okay, when I asked the question of the person on that committee of how many of the 67 counties and the four and 12 cities that had current ordinances in place, out of the four and 12 cities, they had, well, actually, 67 counties had none. The four and 12 cities, they had 12 out of 412. So at that moment, they could have been putting stuff in place to protect the environment and protect their residents, their current, their constituents. But it wasn't. That's what I'm saying. You have to be deliberate and proactive, have a vision on what you want to put in place to make sure you're bulletproof when it come to preemption from the Florida Legislature. And I know how to do that, and I will be able to do that as your Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Mr. Peterman.
I think this is a really important topic. Of course, I served in Florida Legislature also, and also at city council level. And we've always tried to fight against, I have at least, an encroachment of government from the state level. Having served in Florida House, and served several capacities, and bringing resources back to my district, I would say to you that certainly have a knowledge of that and have relationships with many of the folks in the House and quite a few in the Senate. I served with many of the guys in the Senate, as they call the upper chamber. And, and also some of the folks in the House also have lifetime privileges, trying to get into that chamber and talk to folks about what's happening in all of Pinellas County, especially District 7. And those relationships will be there for as long as I live. And so I want to say that and say this, that, you know, the fight is, I think, at the panelist delegation level. The fight had to start there before we even get to Tallahassee. We got to have that conversation at a local level when they're all together here in this county. And when that happens, we have that conversation, filling the seats with people who are being affected by this. Then we can get something done before they even get to Tallahassee. So that's what I would do when I'm in that seat.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scruggs.
I think that I have a very unique position in this race in that I have not served on the city council nor have I served in the state legislature. And I think that it's relevant to make that point because given the quality of life, whether it's our economic status for the residents in District 7, whether it's a 13.9% unemployment rate, whether it's the fact that 75% of African children are not reading proficiently in the Pinellas County schools, there's not a whole lot to celebrate in District 7. One of the reasons that I'm actually running as an NPA in this race is because I feel that we have not strategically aligned relationships as Mr. Peterman, Reverend Peterman talked about with the Pinellas County delegation. We do not have a strategy before we start to lobby for, well, let me back up a minute. First of all, I am a strong supporter and believer in home rule and that the purpose of a charter is to guide us in what we need to do on the local level. Where I think we have challenges is that we have not used that power in a focused way to address the matters of the people in District 7. And one of the things that I bring is because I don't have the baggage of the relationships that have failed the people in District 7, where I don't have a party affiliation attached to me and that my focus becomes on the strategies that help develop the people and put the people over the politics.
Thank you very much. Before we get to our next question, I want to just throw out a quick reminder to try to keep your responses to about 60 seconds if you can. The next question is on transportation. There's been a lot of discussion on merging MPOs and creating a regional planning group. And of course, as you know, MPOs are a federally mandated authority that plans transportation projects. What are your thoughts on merging the regions' MPOs? Let's start with Representative Newton.
Thank you, thank you. I served on MPO when I was on council, and the thought is, is a good one. The problem that we have is we have too many number ones. As you know, each county has an MPO, so that's 67 MPOs. When I attended a project tour down in Miami with Commerce and Mike, and Joe LaCanta, and we had Bob Lasher and our CEO Brad from PSTA, we all went down and we saw three $1 billion projects coming out of the ground, three. You had the Sun Rail project, you had the tunnel, and you had Intermogul facility. The reason they were able to do that, because Commerce and Mike was able to get everybody around the table going in the same direction with the same priority. The problem with multiple MPOs is that everybody has a number one. And when you do that and you go to the federal government for funding a massive transportation project, you end up with nothing because they can't get them all to get together. I mean, even here at the county, we, hopefully, I'm going to be successful because of the bridges that I built and relationships to be able to get 24 mayors to step to the same beat. And you can get stuff, but when you're all going a separate way as it pertains to regional transportation, it's going to be very difficult to get things done. Having less MPOs, you have less of a problem with that. We created T-Ball, which is Tampa Bay Area Regional Transportation. We funded them a million dollars to look at our region, our whole region, as it pertains to transportation needs. We have a Howard Franklin Bridge going up right now with a transit lane in the middle of it. We have to look at other options that we can get to move people around because this is a tourist state. We got to make sure we move people back and forth and move commerce back and forth. But you can't do that with everybody having their own number one because everybody got their own antibody, their own clicks, they can be doing their own thing, and nothing's going to be getting done. So I look forward to being able to continue to do just that because I've been doing it. I'm vested in that. Also Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council.
I ask you to wrap it up, Representative Newton.
I'm done.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Peterman.
Yeah, first of all, I, you know, I think Representative Newton has a wonderful background in that area. He, you know, surely knows it. I would just speak a little differently in terms of regional piece. I think the regional piece is extremely important, and we have to keep trying to bring the MPOs together on one accord. And I think whenever we do that, it's, it's really good for, not only the county, but the state. You know, we've got 21 million people in the state of Florida. It's the third largest state in the Union, you know, in America. So, you know, it's important for us to find ways of linking regions together because of the size of the state, if nothing else. And so I would, I'd be all for that and finding ways to bring down more resources from the federal government as well as any state resources and any other kinds of possibilities and opportunities financially from, from other sources. So I'm for the regionalization of pieces like that. I just want to make it very clear that, you know, that I, from being a Pinellas County person, St. Pete, South St. Pete, born and raised, I want to make sure that Pinellas County leads the way in any kind of regional conversation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Scruggs.
Well, I certainly am in support of joining the MPOs. I have a personal stake in the fact that I've commuted 1,500 miles for 14 years between Pinellas and Orange County and was a part of President Obama's community group talking about the issue, or community advisory group talking about the issue of planning and that it would be almost irresponsible in the 21st century for government officials not to understand that if we're not talking, or the failure to talk regionalization is the failure to talk about planning. Job growth, when we talk about land, lack of land availability, we talk about housing, we talk about transportation, we're going to have to understand that that is going to have to be the leading planning strategy in public, in the public sector, is looking not only in our own backyard, but looking at our, our solutions from a regional standpoint. is looking not only in our own backyard, but looking at our our solutions from a regional standpoint. And I don't know, Representative or Reverend Peterman, that Pinellas has to lead. I think one of the problems that we often run into is who wants to be the head honcho in a strategy? The answer has to be who's better positioned and that we're working, the focus is more on collaboration as opposed to identifying anybody or any or potential municipality as the lead organization. Thank you.
And Ms. Flowers.
Oh, thank you. Um, unfortunately, we missed out on six hundred and sixty six million dollars when it came to light rail to expand our transportation venues so that we had a regional approach versus looking um at what's within our own sphere of influence. I I had an opportunity to continue to serve on P S T A Board of Directors for five years, addressing a strategy to move individuals rapidly, effectively, and efficiently throughout Pinellas County and linking to uh our neighboring counties. So the twenty eight million dollars that was just provided to us for the Bus Rapid Transit System that allows us to move individuals onto the beaches up through Pasco County, across to Tampa International Airport, into downtown Tampa and out to Wesley Chapel, I envisioned that light rail connecting with that, so it takes us out to Orlando and loops us back around to Broward. Um, when I'm down uh for my full-time job in Miami and I see where they can take the uh for two dollars and twenty five cents, they could take the train from Fort Lauderdale and get down to Miami in just a few minutes, it does a couple of things, it takes uh vehicles off of the road, so you're helping with emission standards. Um, and we're utilizing a mode of transportation that allows people to be able to connect. So the M P O has its place because there are regions that are different from others. What works well um in the I four corridor might not necessarily work well in South Florida. But what we need to do is look at how we can collaborate and come together to uh access those dollars from the federal government. I had a chance to talk with Congressman Chris about this very same thing because that's one place where I think state government and federal government does agree. And that is, we need to enhance our um infrastructure and enhancing the infrastructure. It's just not roads and sidewalks or um underground utilities, it's also the transportation hubs that we need. And so we're gonna have to have funding for that, and it's going to be difficult. As a result of COVID nineteen, we will not be generating the revenue that we've generated in the past. So we're going to have to look very creatively as it relates to how we're funding these projects um because we're going to need to make sure that we're linking um new businesses within our communities to the people who need those jobs and how we move them throughout our community, um both on a regional level um and also on a local level. So it's going to be very difficult. I support support the M P Os, they have their place, and it's not necessarily that we have so many people that are in charge. Um, but it's good to have voices at the table so that everybody has an opportunity to share what works best in their communities. And then we find a way to work together based on all of those ideas.
All right, thank you so much. All right, this next question, we're gonna shift to the budget and I'm gonna be more strict on time going forward. I think everybody went over by at least twenty seconds that round. Um, so if I if I cut you off, I I apologize, but I just want to make sure we're able to get to as many questions as possible. Um, this next question again is on the budget. A key duty of county commissioners is to construct, approve, and implement a budget. What one area of county services would you feel most needs additional resources? And should any part of the county budget be shielded from cuts? Let's start with Mr. Peterman.
Well, that's a pretty loaded question. Um, I think one of the areas that needs uh, I believe, more county resources is uh the juvenile welfare board. Now, they have, you know, budgets maybe somewhere from many, anywhere between sixty and eighty million dollars. And um you ever take, I don't know the exact amount right now, but generally around that. I think it's important that we show that up because there are a lot of of poor families, struggling families, especially with the COVID nineteen issue uh that are trying to get along and and trying to find a way in this pandemic. So I think we need more, but before we do that, we have to correct uh the way it's structured now. Many of those families need those resources, but the money's not getting to those families uh the way in which it should. So I think if we've had a broader kind of uh apparatus put place, put in place for the entire county, especially for poor families, struggling families, I would want to show that up and and expand it much, much larger than what it is now and make sure uh as many families as possible get the the resources they need on every level, healthcare, education, whatever, whatever way we can link them to other other pieces, of course, education, the part of the county. But we are linked to some degree in helping the education system. So I think that area is extremely important because it deals with right male needs uh for people in the county. And I think we need to show that area up. There are many other places, but that to me is a main, main area.
Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Scruggs.
Well, I think the um, I don't think there's any such thing in the public sector that can't, that we can categorize as off the table. I think we, as as um public administrators, as policymakers, we have to come to the table recognizing that budgets are going to have taken a serious hit as a result of COVID nineteen. And given that reality, uh, I think the one area that has to be focused on is housing. Uh, we have had since, I think, two thousand seventeen, an increase of forty six percent increase in rental rates in Pinellas County. Thirty two percent of residents of Pinellas County rent. Many millennials whom I've talked to choose to rent. There there there's a much, there's a a different philosophy than the fact that I want to live in this area and work and own a home. That the mindset for young people has changed significantly. And I think that one of the priority areas that needs to be looked at is how do we increase the budget to support down payment assistance given that the rent has increased significantly, given the percentage of people that rent and choose to rent in Pinellas.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Flowers.
Um, I think the field of or the area of social services for me is one area where I want to see us begin to bolster services. That's been my background since I've been an adult and working in the field of social services, particularly case management and mental health services. Um, we've seen as a result of the protests going across the nation, um specifically here in our local community, that one of the crux of the demands from the groups is that we look at those things that police officers are doing that really is not their job. Police officers are not mental health counselors, they're not case managers. Um, and so if we could pull those things away and make sure that we're funding the organizations like P M's, like Sun Coast Mental Health, like Directions for Mental Health, if we're funding them adequately so that they can have um individuals who are able to go out and provide the support services, we won't find ourselves uh incarcerating someone because they're homeless and intoxicated on the street or um uh incarcerating someone um for a low-level offense. That we'll have those things in place that can certainly provide the services that they need, the transitional housing referrals and directives rather than having the police do that. So I would want to see us bolster in that area. The county has about sixty eight million dollars set aside for all of the programs related to human services and social services. And that would be the area that I would like to see bolster.
Okay, thank you so much. Representative Newton.
Thank you. I've served on the St. Pete City Council for eight years under three mayors. We had a recession budget with Mayor Baker, deep recession for four years with Mayor Christ, I'm sorry, Mayor Foster, who were cutting into the marrow, not the bone, the marrow. Also, two years under uh uh Mayor Christman, which has a surplus, he had all surplus budget. So I served in all rounds. I know that everything should be on the table and should be looked at, it should be vetted, fully vetted because anything factual would stand scrutiny. Red out and root out the waste if there's any, make sure you get efficiencies and you partner and there is where you can. Then you look up to the resources that you can bring, like the five cent uh gas tax, like the three hundred and fifty uh billion that'll come down with the hero's funding once they get it out of the Senate that can help pluck those budget holes. And and um you would be able to also leverage more of your money toward industries like Habitat for Manatees, which is Mike Sutton and them, because they're creating affordable homeownership. Okay, people are talking about this rent thing, but that has nothing to do with equity. The way you get out of a harvest, you've got to have homeownership, that's how you create wealth. All this stuff is created by wealth, real estate. So we gotta get these young people in the mindset of, you know, we did, we did hundreds of dedications. Get a home now, start building your 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 assets up. If you want to move, you can move and rent it out later, you don't have to stay there forever. But own a home, affordable home ownership creates wealth.
Thank you very much. I think we have time for one more question. If if we're super concise, we could maybe spit in a second one. Uh, this one is on equity. Name one issue in Pinellas County that directly impacts or is directly impacted by race inequity and explain how the county can incorporate an equity framework in addressing this issue. Uh, let's start with Ms. Scruggs.
Somehow I knew that was gonna, I was gonna get the first, that was gonna be Maria on the first.
I'm just, I'm literally just moving around in a circle on the on the screen here, so.
Just kidding. Um, this is, wow, one minute. The one, what the one focus that I think that the county can be positioned to address the issue of equity has to be in the um area of economics and specifically recognizing that until we have a situation where jobs are targeted for the, for those that are systemically the first, the last hired and the first fired, that until we have a targeted strategy on how we address the retention of African Americans, um, until we address the issue of minority, black and brown businesses being able to sustain themselves, it's going to be very difficult to look at any strat, any equity strategy. And I do this segment called um Truth, uh, Truth Tuesday, Truth Monday. And the focus has to be, if we're going to develop any kind of equity lens, on looking at the economics as it relates to job growth, job retention, and this support of small businesses in Pinellas County.
Thank you very much, Ms. Flowers.
Thank you very much for the question. Um, it certainly is lending institutions and their inability to finance uh small business development and especially loans to minorities and women at the same rate that they provide those services to other individuals. Um, we have, uh, through a number of nonprofits throughout uh the community, throughout the county, have tried to work really hard in bridging that gap between the uh financial lending industry and small business. And while enrolls have been made, we still see that there are areas that need great attention. There is no reason why Twenty Second Street in St. Petersburg, Florida, that started as a Twenty Second Street, Main Street, the same time as Central Avenue, looks the way it looks versus Central Avenue. It's because of the inequity when it comes to supporting small businesses, especially minority businesses in minority neighborhoods. And not just a few dollars, but the adequate dollars that they need to be able to supplant the services so that they will exist over a longer period of time. Um, I also believe that um when we're looking at recruiting, um, when you look at persons who are uh presidents and vice presidents of these nonprofit entities that are providing services in our community, many of those individuals who are serving at those top levels don't look like us from the community. And so we don't see equity in the way that persons are being hired to run those organizations um within our communities um so that they look like and address our communities. There are a number of examples throughout the state of Florida where we do see that and where we see forward movement, um, expressed forward movement in supporting small and minority owned businesses. Um, and so I think we really need to focus on the equity or the inequity that we see in that. We see some movement through um the Florida Education Foundation. I serve on the Pinellas Community Foundation Board. Um, and I've been successful in getting them to set aside certain dollars for those agencies who are doing just that. They are supporting.
Let's leave it there. Sorry, sorry, I'm just trying to keep.
We need a clock.
I'm trying to watch, but it's it's really hard to cut people off on a digital platform. So I'm doing, I'm doing my best, guys. Representative Newton.
Yes, ma'am, to your question equally, first and foremost, I serve as ranking member on Business and Profession Subcommittee. We just went through a deregulation policy that a lot of these rules and policies that put impediments on businesses and people being to operate a businesses and earn some comments. For instance, you have implicit bias policies, you have uh implicit bias in the charters and the purchasing decision through different departments. I love to get into those and weed that out. What I mean by that is, we have stuff in there saying, if you're a felon, you can, you can never do this, you can never do that. Or if um if we give so much business to this individual, that individual, we got to go through there with a fine two cone and make sure that those implicit biases because of uh skin color, race, creed, sexual orientation are are weeded out. Then that way, you'll level the playing field. For instance, like we're playing Monopoly, you get to go around the board forty times and buy up everything. Then you let me join in, everywhere I land is gonna cost me. I can never have enough equity to really sustain myself. That's why I support the uh the the Mike Sutton and Affordable Home Ownership because people need to have equity if they get money. I purchased my house in nineteen ninety, since then, my wife, I've been able to leverage it, reconsolidation, send our kids to college and everything, poor little kids from South Side, St. Pete. But I own a home, I'm a homeowner, and I have equity built up. But we, as a commissioner, need to be able to get those policies out of the way that impediments people from being able to earn comments. That's how you get equity.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, Mr. Peterman.
Yeah, I think this is a two-part piece and it's question, uh, my response. First of all, I think there is systemic and institutionalized discriminatory practices at times in racism, quite frankly, in uh even in county government. I've I've actually represented several people who've come and asked me to be an advocate for them and we pretty much won every every case. I did it as a, just as a resident and someone who understands how municipality works, municipalities work uh throughout this county. And uh I had to fight on the inside. So first of all, I want to look at what's happening on the inside in terms of current people working in that process, the county process, and then all the hiring practices. Secondly, I think you look at the uh the the issues dealing with uh business. Uh, you know, I guess a four hundred million dollars is spending a certain amount of time. I think, I mean, six, seven thousand, I might be off here, was uh was given to African American businesses over a period of time. That's that's horrific. And so I want to take, look at that, I want to create a group internally to oversee this uh on a regular basis and and encourage the uh county administrator uh to have great oversight in this area to make sure that everyone has a a shot at what needs to happen in terms of resources and hiring and also being promoted within the county system.
Thank you very much. All right, that is all we have time for in terms of questions. But um we are gonna uh let you guys wrap it up here with some closing statements. Use this time to share anything that we didn't get to that you'd like your constituents to know about. Um, let's try to keep it to a minute each. Um, I will, can everybody see me when they're talking? I'll kind of feel like this. Okay. Let's, Wenge, I I'm sorry, you're the only person who doesn't get to go twice, go first twice. Um, so you kind of got the short end of the stick, I apologize.
I don't get to go first twice, I do get to go first twice, but I'm okay because I'm doing this. Thank you for having us, Tampa Bay Chamber, I love coming over to the chamber before I let the delegation, before we go off to Tallahassee into the into the vast land of opportunity. I'm happy to report a ninety three billion dollar budget passed unanimously from both houses and signed in by the governor. Again, I talked about the affordable housing, preventing the sweeping back. It gives us rent seventy million dollars for affordable homeownership. We also have three percent pay raises for all state employees, hundred million dollars for uh for Florida forever, fifty million dollars reoccurring for Visit Florida, which goes to twenty twenty three. That was one of your priorities, Chamber. Temp, I meant teacher pay, five hundred million dollars, bringing the minimum starting salary for existing and current teachers to forty seven thousand five hundred, it put us fifth in the nation, top five. Also, a hundred million for our veteran teachers, thirty five million we we approved last week over at uh Batum Cook University for reoccurring funding for historical black colleges and universities. Um, that's Batum Cookman, Ford Memorial, Ed Waters College. We have passed a Divine Nine license plate for our Greek service organizations. So now they can fundraise and help the uh the United Negro College Fund, send African American and black kids to college. Eight hundred mil, eight hundred thousand dollars for the construction of a Florida slave memorial and a and a and a um, let me get it right, slave memorial and a Holocaust memorial on the Capitol grounds, I'm going fast. Um, and if you don't know, slaves built the first capital and slaves built the last capital. I was able to get three bills passed off the floor and signing the law. I brought on four point four million dollars in appropriations back to the district that survived a billion dollar veto plan because of the relationship, the bridges that I built. And I look forward to going back to Tallahassee, as your commissioner, to continue doing just this great work. Thank you for your support and I look forward to talking with you soon. Thank you.
Wenge is incorrigible. Um, let's go to you.
You let me go first and you give me all this stuff.
I let Renee go first, but you you kind of just.
Then I had ten seconds left, so I'm doing a smart move.
Renee, you're.
Thank you so very much for having us here. And thank you to the chamber for your vision of a plan that goes out through twenty twenty six addressing workforce, housing, transportation, and education. Um, I've had an opportunity to serve and I want to continue to serve. And it's because of those relationships um that I've been endorsed by Janet Long. Um, we certainly agree on the resiliency plan and how we continue to move our county forward. I've been endorsed by Mayor Rick Christman and Mayor Sam Henderson from Gulfport because it takes those types of relationships. When you're looking at building transportation across a regional um organization, I've been endorsed by uh council members from the city of St. Petersburg, Gulfport, even up to Oldsmar. Why? Why? Because it's that relationship building when we're going to Tallahassee that we're able to address issues that are systemic throughout our region and not just within Pinellas County. I've also had an opportunity to sign ninety-eight million dollars in bonds in order to build a brand-new Mercy Melrose School, I'm sorry, and to rehabilitate Lakewood High School and so many others. I focused on retention of minority teachers and also recruitment of persons who look like the students that sit before them. I've served as the president of the Florida League of Cities, a nine hundred and ninety-nine million-dollar investment trust. And so I'm asking that the voters put their trust in me because I've actually been here on the ground doing the work on a local level, not looking from that nine hundred ceiling foot, but looking from right here where the problems are. COVID-19 has come upon us and I've worked very hard with the county to address that. And I look forward to being your county commissioner. I've been endorsed by AFL-CIO, I've been endorsed by Roots List, I've been endorsed by SEIU-FPSU, over fifty-five thousand workers throughout the Pinellas County region and the National Organization of Women. I ask that you join that list of endorsements and make me your next county commissioner.
Thank you so much. Mr. Peterman.
I want to thank Tampa Bay Chamber for inviting us all. I think all the candidates are really, really qualified, have a strong slate. I'll just say this, I've served in the community for many, many years and served at city council level, state level, and also served as secretary of a major department. So I understand how it looks from the elected side and the appointed side. Know what it looks like to run government internally and also to support and also have wonderful oversight and connection with people externally in our communities. My endorsements are hopefully from the people themselves who serve in this community and I want to serve with. Been over major budget, the same thing, I actually ran a major department, been over a major budget. So I won't get into the dollars because it would just take too long, all the dollars that I helped to bring into this community. My endorsement is hopefully that the people will support me in this race and that we'll win and be able to serve the great people in this county District Seven.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Scruggs, you get the final word.
Thank you. My name is Maria L. Scruggs and I'm asking for your support to serve as your next Pinellas County Commissioner for District Seven. I'm asking for your support because unlike my colleagues, I have never served in an elected position. And the reason that that point is very important because when I look at the demographics, when I look at the quality of life in the neighborhood within District Seven, something is terribly lacking in a community where seventy-five percent of our African-American children are not reading proficiently. And while the district taunts an eighty-six percent graduation rate, we have to look a little bit deeper in recognizing that that's not a standard diploma. Much of won't be, where young people will not be able to pursue a college degree or to enter a vocational program based on that certificate or degree that they have. The other piece is we have a four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven acre white elephant in the middle of Midtown that in June two thousand fifteen, the county commission signed on to supporting the South Side CRA for the purpose of removing blight in South Pinellas. I'm here to say as a resident and a strong stakeholder of South St. Petersburg, the blight has not been removed for those of us that live here, for those of us who own businesses. The blight has not been removed. The opportunities have not been created as promised. It is apparent that we recognize in the twenty-first century beyond post-COVID-19, it cannot be business as usual and that the voters have to put a person in office that's focused on moving the needle and not just a laundry list of memberships, but of a track record of moving the needle that impacts people. I ask for your support on November third as the next Pinellas County Commissioner for District Seven. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you to all of our candidates, Frank Peterman, Maria Scruggs, Renee Flowers, and Wengay Newton. On behalf of the Tampa Bay Chamber's fourteen hundred members and its Board of Directors, I want to thank you all for joining us today and for your willingness to serve in an elected office. And this concludes our candidate forum.